In the spirit of respect, authenticity and reconciliation, the Town of Slave Lake honours and acknowledges that we are situated on the traditional lands of Sarwich First Nation within Treaty A territory, home to Indigenous, Métis and Inuit peoples who have occupied these lands since time immemorial. Counselor Gromlich?
I will make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And that is carried. Counselor Hughes?
I would like to move to accept the meeting minutes from the Committee of the Home Meeting from October 14th as presented.
There is a motion on the floor. Do you want any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And that is carried. Okay, well, first up, we have our delegation, if you want to come to the frontier, and the floor is yours.
Turn that on.
There you go.
I don't know how to use it either yet.
We're still, they're still a little stumbling. I'm not alone. No, you're not.
And, okay. I think this is on. Okay, well, your worship and counsel, thank you very much for this opportunity to see you once again. I did present to the previous council, and I really appreciate this opportunity to present to your new council for possible consideration in your 2026 budget deliberations. So, this year, STARS is celebrating 40 years of serving Albertans. And we also celebrate all of the partnerships, the longstanding partnerships that have allowed us to serve residents for 40 years. We have now flown over 65,000 missions over that 40 years. We have maintained being a charitable model, so there is no bill to the patient. So that is not possible without partnership. So I'm sure you heard earlier this year, April 30th, that we did lose our founder, Dr. Greg Powell. But we are very committed as a team to continue on his legacy for the next 40 years. This is Kelly Waldron. She was the very first patient flown by STARS as a critical neonatal baby. We have had a lot of different airframes over the years. She was flown in the original Lions Air ambulance. So we partnered with the Lions Clubs of Alberta, and they leased that helicopter you see in the bottom right corner. And that was how we began, was with just volunteer physicians and nurses, and bringing a bag full of physician equipment and flying in the Lions Air ambulance. Thirty-seven years, we have had the BK-117, which served us very well. And I'm proud to say that as of yesterday, we had a logo unveiling event where the original BK-117 was placed in the Aviation Museum in Calgary. And now we are very proud to have a new fleet of 10 H-145 helicopters across our six bases across Western Canada. All helicopters are paid for, so we can move forward now for generations to come and continue to serve Albertans. The advance button is not working. Thank you. And so, of course, now we are also under the leadership of another exemplary critical care emergency physician, Dr. John Froh. He has been with STARS for 13 years. He's held many different roles, and he has now taken the role of the president and CEO of STARS. Thank you. Currently, as we move forward, there has been an increase in operational costs. For Alberta, we are $36.6 million per year for three bases in Alberta, so $12.2 million per base operational costs. We do receive Alberta government funding of $15 million block funding each year towards this operational cost, but that still leaves us 59% that must be fundraised each year. We work with every aspect of chain of survival partners from the fire departments and first responders to the RCMP and search and rescue. We work with EMS, fixed wing, all hospitals and all medical professionals. We're very proud to have been the very first HEMS helicopter EMS program in Canada, to be able to start flying at night more than 20 years ago. So, and this is a huge aspect from the fact that more than 50% of our call volume always occurs at night. So being able to fly at night is essential. We work very closely with, as I said, you know, your fire departments as well. We have done some, been in Slave Lake to do actual critical care training with your fire departments, your EMS and your hospital. We respond to many complex locations. For inaccessible areas, all phases of industry, as well as unforeseen circumstances, backwoods country, and of course recreational. So these are all from the northern, these are actual photos that happened from our northern area. Seen quite a difference in mission types over the last couple of years, quite an increase in cardiac stroke and trauma. And this gives you an idea of roughly about 20%, if you round up about 20% for most all of those, and then a remaining 20% would be pulmonary neurological, a little bit of obstetrical help, as well as environmental. And of course, we are much more than rapid transport now. We are also providing critical care through virtual care consultation. So our transport physicians are available 24/7 to provide virtual care consultation. So this has also occurred with Slave Lake Hospital, where we, if we're not able to come, we may be on a different mission, maybe it's weather inhibited. These types of things does not mean that we are leaving your area without the need and the service of critical care by providing this virtually. Sim Cup Champions as well. This is an international simulation competition. This year, it was October 27 and 28 in Omaha. Out, we always have our own internal competition across all our six bases to allow one team of two that is chosen to represent STARS internationally. This is the 23rd year that we have competed. Out of the 23 years, we have placed top three in the world, all 23 years. This year, I'm proud to say once again that our team took first place again in Omaha. And this makes the ninth time that we have also taken first place in all of those years of competition. We are proud to bring the highest level of critical care here in Alberta to rural residents. This gives you an idea of a 15-year overview of Town of Slave Lake, as well as MD of Lesser Slave River missions that have been flown by STARS. So 144 in total, 113 of these were for Slave Lake itself, for either scene calls, search and rescue as well, and your critical interfacility transfers from your hospital needing to go to higher level of care. So far this year in 2025, there's been eight missions flown, four to the Slave Lake Hospital, two within the immediate area of Slave Lake for scene calls, and two for the MD. Town of Slave Lake and MD residents are both served by two different STARS bases. So both Edmonton and Grand Prairie bases respond to your needs in this specific area. Overall, Slave Lake, the Town of Slave Lake would average approximately seven missions per year. Out from the 15 years shown here, nine out of the 15 years has been seven or more missions flown for Town of Slave Lake. Within the MD boundaries, this will show you patients flown by STARS that are actual residents. So when we look at the upper right-hand corner, these are the communities listed where Town of Slave Lake and the MD residents, where they lived at the time that they were flown by STARS. So 56 total residents since 2010, 40 of them had a Slave Lake postal code. Out of that, on the bottom half, red dots on the map on the left, as well as the listings that you see across on the right-hand side. These represent where the patient and the resident was picked up at the time that they needed STARS. So 29 total were picked up in Slave Lake. Out of that, then the rest show, you'll see the blue outline of MD of Lesser Slave River, and all the red dots that are outside of that, meaning that these residents were not at home at the time that they needed STARS. So the total of 29 residents were actually picked up at the Slave Lake Hospital. Eleven of the residents were flown by STARS across 12 other different locations. So accidents and illness can happen anywhere. And each one of us, we are not exempt from the possibility of having accident or illness happen, and you being in a critical situation sometime. So in closing, you know, we are very, we continue to strive to ensure that we are bringing the highest level of critical care anywhere. So wherever you may be, I think a picture is worth a thousand words in this particular instance here. Our request is for your consideration to join 95% of all of rural Alberta who is onboard, supporting STARS annually with a documented amount in their budget each year, just to help support and provide sustainability. The mission rate continues to increase every day. We're averaging 11 missions per day. So literally, a life is saved every day. Excuse me. Sorry.
Okay, take your time.
So with this, our request to you is either a dollar per capita, which would join you. I'm sorry.
No, take your time, just take a minute. We're-
I think it's because-
We're gonna get her. No, okay.
Oh, so much-
Counselor Hughes is on it, just take a moment.
Okay, thank you. The air is so dry now, just, it's that time of year. Thank you. Thank you so much. Excuse me for just a moment.
No worries, take your time.
Okay, let's try that again. Thank you. $1 per capita commitment annually would join you with 95% of Alberta as municipal supporters. Seventy-five percent of our province are regional leaders, meaning that they are designating $2 per capita annually, or choosing a fixed rate of support, your choice, that may fit well within your budget. The majority of the province is between a $2, up to $90 per capita, and everything in between. We're asking you as a new council for a four-year pledge in conjunction with your council term. This also provides sustainability for STARS and our services each year as the missions continue to increase. With that, I can't say other than, STARS is an anomaly, possibly in the world, in the fact that we have been 40 years a charitable model, no bill to the patient, more than 65,000 missions flown. It is partnership that has made all of that possible. And this is the opportunity we're asking to partner with you. The MD itself has been onboard several years. They are providing at a $2 per capita as well. We just recently secured another long-term $1 million commitment from another municipality over the next four years. So the opportunity is basically that we all join together and ensure that we continue to have access to STARS, as you saw on the postal code map, wherever your residents may travel across Western Canada, where we have our six bases. They could be in another province, it could be in Winnipeg, and they have access to STARS at no cost to them because of partnership. We really appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and I'll open up the floor to council if anyone has any questions they'd like to make or comment at this time. Counselor Hughes?
Thank you so much for coming again. It's nice to see you again, making a presentation here. I just have more of a actual personal anecdote. I actually had a family member this past year who was in a serious accident and had to call STARS. And if STARS wouldn't have been there, he probably would have passed away. So personally speaking for me, that was very, very apparent with my family, the good work that you guys do. And I just really wanted to acknowledge that we're lucky to have those services in Alberta, certainly. The other part to this that I was curious on, you mentioned the MD, you're saying the MDLSR?
Yes.
Okay, is doing a $2 per capita?
They are doing-
Okay.
Yes.
And are you presenting to them as well, asking for the same kind of four-year, like for the length of their term?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, then I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
They have already been onboard for several years.
Yes, okay.
This is just their annual update, and I will continue, I work with many municipalities across the province, so I will continue to bring an annual update, bring you statistical information. It's just, we would really welcome you as a partner.
Awesome, thank you. I was gonna say that I would love to just see this, I guess, brought forward at budget time, with the actual impacts on the per capita amount, and maybe just some options from administration. That's kind of where I was leaning, but I'll let others weigh in.
Okay, I don't see anything further. Thank you for your presentation, and yes, that's why I appreciate you adjusting the timing of your presentation to us, so that we can bring this back to budget deliberations, which will be occurring in the next couple of months.
Okay.
So thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time. I did bring you the brand-new calendar for 2026, so, and also one for your fire department. So please pass that on, because we love them very much.
We'll do that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counselor Gromlich?
I just make a motion to accept the report as information.
Any further discussion? Called to question those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for the water. The recipe. Anytime.
Okay, next up, we're gonna move into our new business and reports. We have Big Fish Bay, Phase Five Outline Plan, and Joanna? The floor is yours.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. So the purpose of tonight's report is for council to review and decide if they would like to approve and endorse the Big Fish Bay RV Resort Outline Plan for Phase Five. Some background, on April 1st, 2017, the Town of Slave Lake entered into a lease agreement with Big Fish Bay Resort, and on April 18th, 2018, council accepted a five-year concept plan. Due to the development intensity and broad information within that five-year plan, the town requested the submission of an outline plan. In June 2018, the applicant submitted an outline plan, and that plan saw the development proceed in five phases over the course of the next five to seven years. And that development would consist of 487 fully-service campsites, 15-year-round recreational cabins, a 200-stall marina and parking lot, and two additional playgrounds, and a restaurant. All future campsites would have power, water, sanitary sewer, and would be approximately 45 feet by 60 feet. Since the applicant was submitting detailed site plans, the size of the campsites was determined at the development permit stage. And as per council's previous condition, that 80-meter buffer along Caribou Trail was left undeveloped. In addition, as per the land use bylaw of the time, there would be no development within 30 meters of the top of bank from Lesser Slave Lake. And Mr. Fetter of Associated Engineering had indicated that the top of bank would be established by a biologist, a surveyor, and a representative of the town. And as such, the site plans that were submitted at development permit stage would likely reflect the required setback adjustments at that time. In 2018, the town accepted the design basis report for Big Fish Bay. Essentially, the town's development standards and procedures did not contemplate a recreation resort servicing standard, so the design basis report established the standard developments within the resort and what they would be developed to. In May of 2023, the town approved the amended stormwater management plan for Big Fish Bay. The planning department has issued permits for developments that have taken place within the Big Fish Bay, which includes more RV sites, cabins, group sites, an outdoor pool, decking and pump houses, all within phases one to four on the leased lands. And I just want to note that although the original outline plan indicated that the development would, on the leased lands, would take place in five phases, the phases were actually reduced to four, and Phase Five of the Big Fish Bay Resort is now considered the privately-owned lands adjacent to it. So the operators of Big Fish Bay Recreation Resort have purchased the provincial lands that were immediately adjacent to the town's leased lands to facilitate Phase Five of the resort's ongoing expansion. The intent of this purchase is to continue the cohesive development, cohesive development pattern of Big Fish Bay. And this step, and the first step in this process is to develop and seek approval of an outline plan. This plan will ensure cohesion between the development phases, that the applicant is considering the town's development standards and procedures when developing water and sanitary sewer services, road construction and storm ponds, et cetera. Ensure no conflicts, flicks between uses, and ensure good planning principles have been implemented. The draft outline plan has undergone technical review by Jeff Fetter from Associated Engineering, and has been revised in accordance with his comments. The current version conforms to the standards outlined in the design basis report, which established the engineering and service criteria for recreational use development at Big Fish Bay. To date, the landowners have been granted a development permit for logging of the area, which was completed during the summer of 2025. So their proposed plan, Phase Five, will introduce a total of 151 recreational sites supported by new infrastructure and amenities. Recreational RV and year-round cabin sites placement would be subject to individual development permits. A 20,000-square-foot multipurpose building, this would accommodate the resort's office, store, and an indoor recreation area, which would also be, a future development permit would be issued for. The relocation of the existing outdoor pool, slides, decks, and pump house, pump buildings into Phase Five areas subject to a development permit application. A 43-stall parking lot adjacent to the recreation building. Each site, as mentioned, would be fully serviced with water, power, sanitary sewer, and would be approximately 21 meters by 30 meters. Phase One is expected to be constructed during 2025 and 2026, and includes the following development projects: 65 fully-service recreational lots at 650 square meters, the 20,000-square-foot office store recreation building, and development of the outdoor pool and slide area. Further development of the area would include development projects to complete Phase Five in 2027 and beyond, which would be the remaining service recreational lots, and the 43-stall parking lot. Phase Five development will connect to the Town of Slave Lake's municipal water and wastewater systems to ensure consistency with existing infrastructure and long-term service sustainability. A separate service connection and metering system will be installed, since the lands designated for this phase form a distinct legal parcel from the previously developed portions of Big Fish Bay. The connection to the town's main water line will be completed using hot-tap method, which allows the tie-in to occur without the need for service interruption to the existing municipal system. Wastewater connection locations remain subject to further review and confirmation by engineering consultants, so detailed design drawings will be submitted in the spring of 2026 to finalize the tie-in details. In the meantime, the onsite work related to the wastewater system may proceed with final approval of the connection to follow once more detailed plans are reviewed and accepted by the town and associated engineering. The internal water network will be constructed as a looped main system incorporating 11 hydrants and providing consistent service and fire protection coverage throughout the development area. This layout aligns with the standards outlined in the design basis report, which governs servicing requirements for the Big Fish Bay Resort. The servicing standard will remain recreational grade, as this is appropriate for the resort's intended seasonal and cabin-based occupancy model, and has been reviewed and accepted by Associated Engineering. All new internal roadways within Phase Five will be gravel-surfaced with a 10-meter driving width and 150-millimeter gravel servicing depth, consistent with the approved development standards for recreational resort uses. Vehicle access will continue from Caribou Trail, maintaining seamless connectivity to the existing Big Fish Bay entrance, and the internal road system will feature a central traffic circle with a 40-meter diameter, designed to improve circulation, facilitate safe RV maneuvering, and enhance the overall flow of vehicles through the site. Emergency access points equipped with knock-down bollards will be constructed along the south and east boundaries of the development to ensure compliance with fire safety, emergency egress requirements. And both internal and external engineering reviews conducted by the Town of Slave Lake and Associated Engineering have confirmed that the roadway design complies with the development standards. Stormwater management for Phase Five will rely on surface drainage system that follows the natural flow of the land. The drainage network will be composed of swales and direct runoff toward the northwest, integrating both existing and newly constructed swales to ensure efficient water movement. Two existing drainage swales located along the west and south boundaries will be maintained, while a new north boundary swell will be added to accommodate additional flow generated by the expanded development. The proposed drainage design has been reviewed and approved by Associated Engineering, confirming that it meets the Town of Slave Lake's development standards, and the combined swell system effectively manages onsite stormwater while preventing negative impacts or discharge onto surrounding properties. This approach also minimizes environmental disturbance by using natural drainage patterns rather than relying on mechanical stormwater systems. In accordance with the intermunicipal development plan, the outline plan for Phase Five has been referred to the MD Lesser Slave River for review and comment. And as of the date of the submission, no written or verbal comments or objections have been received from the MD or other referral agencies. So the recommendation is Phase Five of the Big Fish Bay Recreation Resort represents a significant continuation of the resort's long-term vision to evolve into a comprehensive year-round tourism and recreation destination. The proposed lot layout, servicing design, and amenity improvements have been carefully planned to support sustainable growth, maintain environmental integrity, and ensure safe, efficient access for visitors and residents alike. The project aligns fully with the Town of Slave Lake's planning and servicing standards, and will contribute meaningfully to the community's tourism, economy, and recreation opportunities. The engineering design, along with the outline plan for Phase Five, has already been completed and reviewed by Associated Engineering to confirm compliance with the town's design basis report and development standards. While this technical work is finalized, the next step in the process is for council to consider and approve the outline plan. Approval of the outline plan will formally establish the planning framework and recognize the servicing as design standards under which the development will proceed. Following approval of this outline plan, administration will prepare a development agreement between the Town of Slave Lake and Big Fish Bay. And this agreement will define the detailed terms and responsibilities related to construction management, service installation timelines, financial securities, and municipal inspection requirements. The completed development agreement will be brought forward to council for a final review and approval prior to commencement of construction activities. This ensures transparency, municipal oversight, and adherence to all approved engineering and servicing standards. So the recommendation of the planning department is for council to endorse Big Fish Bay Phase Five Outline Plan as presented. Any questions?
Okay. You counsel a moment here to-
Are you waiting on-
Yes, she said question, so waiting. Waiting for buttons pushed. Counselor Hughes?
Thank you so much for the comprehensive report, Joanna, it's great. I feel like this is going very well, and you've obviously covered a lot of the bases. My main concerns with this was water and the roads in particular, but I see that you've done due diligence with the engineering firms and all those things, so it sounds like everything is going well there. I actually had the opportunity two or three weeks ago, when Travel Alberta was up, to tour through the brand-new development area, and it is really great. There's a lot of land there, they have a lot of really great goals that they want to achieve. And as someone who's also passionate about tourism in our area, that is very exciting to me. So yeah, I support, you know, us moving forward with their request and wanting to work hand-in-hand with Big Fish Bay to see tourism grow and everything that it'll bring to our community, I think will be wonderful. Thank you.
They've amended the plan as requested. And they've amended the plan as requested. It has gone back and forth between the two parties several times already, so.
Yep. I will ask my question then. So when it says in here that just, because we've had discussions about off-site levies and things like that before. So it does say in here that following approval of this plan, that we're gonna talk about servicing installation timelines, financial securities. Is that when off-site levy portion comes into this?
It will all be covered in the development agreement. So I do have a draft development agreement already.
Yes.
We're in the process of reviewing it, and then it will go to Big Fish Bay to review. It will go back and forth a couple of times before it comes to you, but that's when off-site levies will be handled.
Okay, and then now the floor is to Counselor Choba, virtually. Hold on a second, we'll get your mic turned off there. There you go. Floor is yours, Andrew.
Thank you. I think you just asked the same question that I was going to, Mayor Ward. So I won't have a question instead, I'll just go ahead and make the motion. I move that council endorses the Big Fish Bay Phase Five Outline Plan as presented and direct administration to prepare a development agreement with Big Fish Bay Recreation Resort to be brought forward to council for final review and approval prior to the commencement of construction.
Thank you. That was a very long motion to have done virtually, so well done. Appreciate that. Very well done. Is there any further discussion as we have a motion on the floor? As I see none, I will call to question those in favor. And that is carried. Thank you. Next up, we have the Municipal Policing Committee Bylaw. Kush?
Good evening, your worship and members of council. The purpose of this report is to create, is to bring, to get council approval to create a municipal policing committee bylaw as directed by Police Governance Regulation. Just a brief background for the new council members. The provincial government passed Bill Six, the new Police Amendment Act in twenty twenty-two. And this amendment act is intended to increase police transparency and enhance public trust. In addition to other reforms, the legislation requires the formation of civilian governance bodies for all municipalities in Alberta so that communities can participate in setting policing priorities and performance goals. Every community in Alberta served by R C M B will be required to be represented by one of the following types of governance bodies, depending on their size and type of police service agreement. They will either fall under municipal policing committee or regional policing committee or provincial police advisory board. In our case, we were supposed to form a regional policing committee with similar-sized municipalities from Eastern District. However, all other municipalities from Eastern District opted to create their own committee, leaving us no option but to form our own municipal policing committee. Just a reminder that municipalities forming their committee will be responsible for cost of establishing, administering, and sustaining membership of municipal policing committees. Administration presented a report to council on August nineteenth meeting. However, during that meeting, council directed administration to request some clarifications with provincial staff and bring back a report, which was later presented on September second. And I have included those clarifications that were presented by the provincial staff back to us in my, in my report. After providing the clarifications, we did request council to, to, to approve the proposed bylaw. However, council directed administration to send a letter seeking minister approval for forming our own committee and to bring back the proposed bylaw once approval is granted. As per council's direction, a letter was sent to minister on September tenth, and approval was provided by the minister on October fifteenth. A letter is attached to the, to the report in the back. Administration is now bringing the proposed bylaw back for council's approval. So council has a couple of options. Council can give all three readings today or council can give first reading today, and we can bring back bylaw at November eighteenth, regular meeting of council. For communication, we will, if the bylaw is approved, we will create public advertisement to attract applicants to join municipal policing committee. And advertisements will be available on Town of Slave Lake social media platforms as well as town website. Our recommendation is council to give all three readings of Municipal Policing Committee Bylaw number sixteen twenty twenty-five.
Okay. I'll open up the floor to council. If any questions for Kush? Pardon?
Right.
Yes.
Just as a point of clarification in the motion, motion number five has already been completed, so.
Yeah, motion five is not.
When we do the motion, we do not need to include number five, as that was the letter that was sent and received.
Okay, so motion five does not.
Yeah, we just strike it from.
Yeah, it does not need to be made, so if we are gonna proceed with these, there's motions one to four. Counselor Grammick?
Yeah, so I think, I wouldn't say, we got what we needed. It obviously has to be done, whether you like it or not. And I appreciate Minister Ellis granting us permission to, to do it our way, their way. So that, that's the best case scenario. So I, I'll let everyone talk before I make a motion, just in case there's more people who would like to speak.
Counselor Hughes.
Do we have an idea of what the budgetary implications of this would be?
I think Roland had provided in the past, he was saying somewhere around five to seven thousand mark.
Annually, yeah.
Yeah, annually.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep, I appreciate administration taking our, last time it was a fairly heated discussion where I did say, we're not yelling at you. We are speaking aggressively regarding something, legislation that we felt kind of was pushed upon us. So appreciate taking that, going back, and getting some clarifications on these points. Counselor Grammick?
We were yelling through you.
Through you, not at you, through you.
I'll make a motion to give bylaw number sixteen dash two zero two five, first reading.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Do we have any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And that is carried. Counselor Choba?
I move to give bylaw number sixteen dash two zero two five, second reading.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And that is carried. Counselor Hughes?
I move to give bylaw number sixteen dash two zero two five unanimous consent for third reading.
Okay, any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And that is carried. Counselor Bowes?
I move to give bylaw sixteen dash two zero two five, third reading.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And Counselor Hudson? All those opposed or in favor? Nope, okay, let's try that again. Called to question those in favor. Okay, and that is carried. Perfect. That would be it?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next up, we have question period. Any questions for council to administration? Okay, quiet week. I will move forward as I see no indication here. Correspondence. So we'll move into correspondence, item A. The document is in your package. Is there any comments from administration regarding this? Alex or Ashley?
Yeah, under the first one for the M E T flag, there's, it's just a request for them to fly the flag for the week. So as per our bylaw, we need to bring that back to council for final approval.
Okay, so it's administration, is this mean a report is coming or does administration have any concerns with this application?
Sorry, I was just gonna say there's two correspondents. One is to fly the M E T flag for M E T week, and the other one is indefinitely. I would say the second request or the one to fly definitely would be more of a budgetary item. But the one for M E T week is within our policies.
Does it mean, that's, that was my question.
Six minutes requirements, so we're bringing it to council as it aligns.
So for clarification to council, there, the first request here is to raise the flag for M E T week, as we have done previously, as Ashley indicated, our executive assistant, that there are no issues with regards to the policy. And the policy does have final requests come here for voting, so that would require a motion should we choose to. Following that, there is a second request for a permanent installation of the flag. Administration is recommending that it is potentially tabled to budget for further review with a report. C A O?
We'd also recommend working with the S A R G and have maybe a joint place to put those flags permanently and not in the existing flagpoles. So it would be a budgetary item for all.
Would be a budgetary item and perhaps a report to come back. Okay. Okay, I, I will make a motion then to fly the M E T flag for M E T week as requested by the period and timeline in the correspondence. My motion on the floor, is there any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And that one is carried. Yep, Counselor Hughes.
Budgetary though, Mayor Ward?
Yeah, well, there, if we, if we do want this to come back to budget or for a report to come.
You wanna form a motion?
I would like that.
Okay, I move that administration considers part two of this request here with a permanent flag solution to be brought back to us at budget time. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And that is carried. Then we're gonna move into correspondence, part B, where there is commemorative lighting at Renee Hall Plaza, if administration wants to speak to this.
Again, a request to change the lights for Family Violence Month. They're requesting from Tuesday, sorry, Wednesday, sorry, my apologies. The eleventh to the, the twelfth to the nineteenth, I'll get it right eventually. It does meet all the, the recommendations, so it just needs approval to, from council.
Okay.
No issues from administration.
Perfect. Counselor Hughes?
I move that we fulfill this request, please, and light the lights at Renee Hall Plaza for the Northern Haven Society from November twelfth to November nineteenth, as requested.
Okay, motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And that one is carried. We will move right on through to State of the Lake. Do any counselors have anything for State of the Lake? Counselor Choba, my State of the Lake. We'll just get your mic turned off here in a moment, and then floor is yours.
Okay. I want to start by sharing that our thoughts are with everyone who got affected by the category five hurricane in Jamaica. To our Jamaican residents who call Slave Lake home, your pain, your concern for your loved ones back home are deeply felt in our community. Slave Lake stands with you. We are a town that understands resilience and unity. And at this moment, we extend our compassion, our prayers, and our supports to you and your family. If you have loved ones impacted, please do not hesitate to reach out to your supports that can help you lead you through the difficult times. I know that the Afro-Career Society of Slave Lake is putting together something. So I just invite the caring members of our community to reach out and support that community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Choba. And in closing, I would just like to say for State of the Lake, welcome to all the new faces at this table. It is great to see, the seat's almost filled and virtually, so it is fantastic not to just have five of us. So it's great to see a full council. And that's, that's fantastic for all of us moving forward. So meeting one, looking forward to a positive four years working with everyone. And then also a reminder that Tuesday is Remembrance Day, and our Remembrance Day ceremonies are held outside at the Legion. They obviously start at eleven o'clock on the eleventh with the laying of wreaths. And it, that's okay. Ah, thank you. There will be no council meeting on the eleventh. Thank you, administration, for keeping me in line because I don't have that in front of me. If there is nothing further, I have Counselor Grammick first.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And that is carried.